Board of Commissioners Work Session, today's Thursday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Appreciate the attendance of you that are with us and as well as those that are watching us online. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have presentation of FY twenty-two Council Accountability Court Judges Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Enhancement Grant for Dawson County Treatment Court. Treatment Services Director Jesse Emmett. Jesse. You would turn that microphone on there. Thank you.
Man, I hope y'all are doing well. It is grant season again, so I'm here to reapply.
Oh, we like that.
Yes, we like receiving it for sure. So we have two grants that we are reapplying for again this year. The first one is for our Treatment Court Program, which encompasses our Drug Court, our DUI Court, and our Mental Health Court. We are requesting a total of two hundred ninety-one thousand thirty-eight dollars this year. There is a match requirement from the county. I thought it was twelve percent when I first put this together, but actually was informed it's only ten percent, which is what it's been in the past. Next year it will raise to twelve percent, but we're going to maintain that through one of our county funded positions through their salary. So we're not asking for any dramatic changes from last year to this year. We'll maintain our two full-time counselor positions in that grant. And then our drug testing services, we've been partnering with a private provider to help supplement some of our grants. So we're just asking for the same thing as we did last year.
I see we need to move it tonight.
Yes, please.
Yes, you had requested that.
Yes, sir.
It needs to be done or not?
Just approval to apply.
Yes, yes, ma'am, just to apply. We should find out at the end of April if we've been granted this or not.
Okay.
Okay.
So you basically talked about both of them at the same time here?
Well, I can. The second one's just for our family treatment court. It's the same as we did last year. We're asking for the full-time position. We'll actually be transitioning our clinical case manager, who's Megan Hill, moving her into an actual coordinator position. Since we started the program in January twenty nineteen, we've shared our Hall County Coordinator run both. And our program has doubled in size since we started, so it's time to transition her. She'll be the coordinator for that program. Alleviate those duties from our Hall County Coordinator, but everything else will stay the same. So the total that we're asking for with family treatment court, which I don't believe is on here, but I have. Yeah, there with me for just a moment, one thirty-five.
One hundred and thirty-one thousand three sixty-two.
Yes.
Is there a match?
It'll be the ten percent match. Again, we'll use the county funded position to supplement that.
And most of these been going on. One of them was a decade or something.
Two thousand and twelve.
And Dawson County Treatment Court started in two thousand and six, so we're turning fifteen this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so big anniversary.
Yeah. Any questions for this Senate on either one? You need both of them moved forward, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Y'all good with moving both of those four?
Yes.
Okay, we will do so. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of special event business license application, Dreamland Amusement Carnival Planning and Development Director Jameson Kenley. Jameson.
Thank you, Chairman. It is special event season coming up. The North Georgia Premium Outlet Mall is will be hosting or is wanting to host Dreamland Amusement Carnival that will include rides, games, and food from April twenty-ninth through May ninth in their parking lot closest to the former Ruby Tuesdays Restaurant. They expect about a thousand people per day. The event will occupy about two hundred and forty parking spots. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, five P M. to eleven, and Saturdays and Sundays, noon to eleven. Security of the event will be coordinated with the Dawson County Sheriff's Office and by Dreamland and the Outlet Mall. Water will be provided by the Outlet Mall for all cleanups. All COVID nineteen precautions will be adhered to as well. All necessary documentation and signatures have been obtained, and at this point I will entertain any questions.
Questions for Jameson.
Is this is is this the same one that's done it for several years?
It is not. This is actually a different carnival.
Okay, I thought I thought we'd had Dreamland before, but we've not.
Not in the last three or four years, for sure.
Well, you remember the name of the one that was down there? You know, we had somebody that.
Yeah, they've had carnival things in the past.
We have. Last year was the first year that they actually, they backed out. I don't know if the applicant is here. He might be able to speak to that better than I could.
Oh, is that back entrance there? Open back up? They fix that and open it up where Ruby Tuesdays is?
I think McKee said they took a jackhammer out there the other day and cut all that out.
Is it open though? I'm not talking about the rest of it, the drive.
It was not open.
I like to see that open though.
I will. I'll reach out to the Outlet Mall and see the progress on that because we have, we have had multiple conversations.
Yeah, I'd see that open before this is open.
Absolutely.
What month was this? Was it April?
April twenty-ninth through May ninth.
I know they, I read a lot of stuff they had done for COVID. But are we still not concerned about COVID? With something like this? And I know they said expect a thousand people, but of course they all won't be there at the same time. And I just wonder who's gonna monitor that.
We've got the owner here, if he wants to ask him that specific question.
Yeah.
Well, that's her. Explain your COVID policy that you're gonna have.
I mean, there's a whole bunch here, but.
Come up to the mic.
Sure. We do have a whole written policy, and since October, we've been actually since last June, but then we shut down until October. So since October, we've been implementing it weekly. We have two units on the road and the hand washing stations are there for the public. Mask wearing suggested, we get a lot of feedback. You know, I don't want to wear my mask kind of thing, and you know how that goes, that argument, but social distancing, we encourage it, but there's not really a way to force people apart. You know, we're not trying to be the COVID police per se. We're definitely a fun environment. People know what to do. And of course, the vaccine rollout, you know, we're almost two months away. Is that right? April twenty, what's, I'm forgetting my dates, right?
March eighteen.
I know what today is, yeah, but it's April.
A little over a month, month and ten days.
Yeah, something like that. So we've got time and there's more and more of the vaccine rollout, which we're seeing, you know, a lot of people responding positively by coming outside. And of course, weather matters. We're outside, we're not indoors. So, you know, we've been dealing with the COVID for months and no problem. We sanitize our rides before we open with a UV activated substance, and there's constant wiping down of the rides on a regular basis. The hand sanitizing stations are everywhere in the midway. You know, it's the times we're in, people know what to do.
And doing what you can.
Our employees wear masks as well. Not everywhere is mandated, but we're still in that policy of wear your masks while you're on duty.
So have you done these? I think you said something about October. Have you done these and go back and check what happens with COVID or?
Well, we're not the COVID police again, but
You're not?
No, not at all, but
You to be.
You know, the one community we were in outside of Orlando, they did the heaviest monitoring, and we still had a very good sizable crowd, and we had no negative feedback. There are people that comment on our social media, you know, how could you do such a thing, but don't show up? You know, it's pretty simple in that sense. You know, everybody, we're in America. It's freedom. You have the freedom to make the decision to come to the carnival.
So in between like your little, I guess you got like the little games where you take the basketball or the big sledgehammer and make it go up. Y'all were sanitizing in between that, just.
They're supposed to be. I couldn't say that, you know, it's such a diligent effort, but it isn't our policy to do it. We go out and remind everybody. It's probably heavier at the beginning than it is at the end, but you know, we definitely are monitoring that. We have a couple managers that, you know, just get on everybody about that whole cause of keeping clean and keeping safe.
Other questions for the owner or James?
And I'm actually not the owner. I'm the marketing and permit guy, so the owners are, we're actually in Sugarloaf right now. So I'd welcome all of you to come to Sugarloaf and see what we do. We're at the Sugarloaf Mills Mall by Bass Pro.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Jameson. Next up, we have presentation of application for Parade and Assembly Four-H Rabies Clinic. Jameson.
The annual Four-H Rabies Clinic will be held here at the Courthouse Parking Lot on May first from ten to one. This event has been held in the same location for the last eight years. Clark and his staff are expecting around three hundred participants. No issues from any of the previous years, and all necessary documentation have been obtained, and I will answer any questions.
Questions for Jameson.
What's, what's the cost of the shots? Do y'all do the one year or three year? Can you do three years?
Just for one year.
Okay.
Thanks.
Other questions? Thank you, Jameson. Next up, we have presentation of Mobile Home Ordinance Planning and Development Director Jameson. You're up again.
Thank you, Chairman. Getting used to being up here again. All right, so for all intensive purposes, we're calling this Mobile Home Ordinance. What planning is really trying to do is update our minimum standard codes to include mobile homes and specifically moved mobile homes where someone has a pre-owned mobile home, they want to move into the county and have the certain necessarily standards for that. All mobile homes will still have the HUD stamp, and we ensure the insurers, the federal government has inspected these when they were originally moved in. But you know, as since we really don't want mobile homes to be moved in the county, especially if they've had anything alterations done to them or anything that could cause any type of structural damage or fire damage or any type of walls that have been removed on the inside that could be important. So basically, and I'll just go through the ordinance sections, the exhibit A, section five oh one six one, and this is on page forty-six of your packet. This is our basic mobile home manufactured mobile home compatibility standards. This is already in our land use resolution. So this is the portion that's in our land use resolution. What we'll eventually do is take it out of our land use resolution and just keep it in one place in our minimum standard codes. Section one oh five sixty-two is our inspection checklist where we talk about what, when we go out to a pre-owned mobile home, what are we looking for? We're looking for general electric systems, plumbing systems, A F A C. Systems and some additional things that just to make sure that, like I said, no alterations have have been done. And then section one oh five sixty-three are the additional requirements. It does take a lot of time, especially if I'm sending anyone of my inspectors outside the county. A lot of counties have addressed this with a five hundred dollar inspection fee as well as a twenty-five percent per mile. We also, number one, under one oh five sixty-three does limit to a fifty mile radius. That way I'm not sending any of my inspectors out of state to and taking more than several hours to do this inspection. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to limit the amount of mobile homes that come into the county that were are pre-owned. And if so, we try to at least look and make sure that they're up to some sort of occupational standard. This was heard last year pre-COVID, and things kind of died down, so I'm, we're ready to to kick this back up, and I'm getting pressure from my building official to push this back through, so I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Questions for James?
Is there a age limit or is it just based, it seems like we talked about that before. There was an age or just based on condition, because you had a.
We can add additional conditions and standards. We cannot state laws restrict us from
Right now, there's not one, is there?
Right.
I thought I read.
There's not. And like I said, that's based on state laws. And we, and that's why we said mobile home and manufactured homes, because after, I believe, I think it was in the seventies, we no longer call them mobile homes. We call them manufactured homes, but we treat them all the same, so we combine those as manufactured and mobile homes.
Other questions for James? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Presentation of vape ordinance update. James?
Yes, sir.
Can somebody else do the presentation?
There's a man after.
All right, all right. So Dawson County first adopted its vape ordinance in July of two thousand and nine, and since that time, the state of Georgia has updated their minimum age to purchase vape products to twenty-one. Our county ordinance can be more restrictive than the state ordinance, but not more lenient. So what we are doing is we are updating all of our ages where we had nineteen to twenty-one. We are also updating our definition to match what the state is, has. Basically, the addition was the aerosol cartridge and or other container of nicotine. So they went, their definition was a little more defined than ours, so we updated that. And last but not least, on exhibit D, which is on page fifty-six of your packet, we're just updating the section that has all the OCGA numbers to, to the updated OCGA's numbers with the state. I haven't sent this out to the vape shop owners as of yet. I was waiting for the board to move forward with the public hearing, and I will present it to them. And just to make sure that they they read over it, because I know they, two thousand and nineteen, they did have a large turnout, so.
The city did theirs not too long ago. Is this in line with where theirs is at?
I am unfamiliar with the city's ordinance. This is in line for the majority with the state.
Other questions for James? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have presentation of Board Appointment Department Family Children Services Karen McCord replacing Nancy Stotts. That term will be April twenty twenty-one through June twenty twenty-four, and you have the information in reference to Ms. McCord, who used to work for family Department Family Children Services. She's an excellent choice to serve on that board. Next up, we have discussion of sewer issues at Fire Station Number Two. Facilities Director James Tom. James, come on up.
Good afternoon. I'm here to discuss some sewer issues we're having at Station Number Two. About three weeks ago, we got a work order request to come down there because all the water was backing up into the building, all parts of the building. We had Townley Construction go down and do and look at the sewer system down there. He dug it up. Unfortunately, the sewer system that exists at Station Two now is full and can't be reused. We had environmental health come in. They looked at it. They said there's no way we can use it because of the location where it is on the bottom. It's just full of water. It's four hundred and thirty-six foot of infill trailer system, which is quite a bit, and I'm a little bit surprised that it did fill up in eleven year time that it's been there. We have gotten Mr. Townley to come in and give us a quote on two options. One option, the Environmental Health Department gave us a backup plan for infill trailer system. Unfortunately, that backup plan shows it on the upper level at the top lot that's out facing Highway fifty-three. If we do that, if we go that route, we still have to pump it up the hill about fifteen hundred feet and have a pump to do it with, and we will most likely use the use of the lot for future use, and everybody knows that's a pretty nice lot up top. Option number two is to hook it into Edgewall Water and Sewer, which is happens to be on the other side of Highway fifty-three. And we have gotten a quote for that from Mr. Townley, who has our own contract. And we have gotten a quote for that from Mr. Townley, who has our own contract plumber. Unfortunately, it's quite of an expensive to take care of that, to boil under fifty-three. I think y'all got the information in your package at a hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars. My recommendation is to go that route. We've looked at other options. But this is a long-term fix. In my opinion, if you do put infiltrator up on an upper lot, there's no guarantee that that won't fail in the future. And by going on to the Edgewood Sewer, it's a long-term fix. It will connect the other two upper lots into it for future use. If we ever decide to build something there, they will be able to hook directly on the Edgewood Water and Sewer. Unfortunately, we're having to pump the tanks about once every week, every two weeks right now. They're about three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a cost, so it's something we need to take care of pretty quick. And I've spoken to Mr. Townley. He's not got back with the day, but he understands the severity of the issue. We talked to a couple of different people. We knew that there was somebody potentially going to have a subdivision in the future behind tractor supply, supply in the Dollar General. Unfortunately, that's a ways down the line, and after speaking to some people in charge of that, we figured there was just too many loose ends to go that route. So my recommendation to the board is to move forward with Townley Construction and hook it on to Edgewood Water and Sewer. One other note is, is we have been talking with Edgewood Water and Sewer, and they've been trying to work with us as best they can, so I'll be glad to answer any question.
Questions for James?
If we look at it in reverse with that any future development goes over there, could we size it up enough where they could connect to that potentially?
I think it calls for a two-inch line going up the hill and then an eight-inch line underneath the highway.
Yeah. So we might potentially could recoup some of that money from-
You mean from somebody like, say, for example, build on our side of tractor supply to hook into us at a later day?
Yes. If we, if we have the cost of the infrastructure, if we bury the cost of the infrastructure now, and let's say somebody builds a whether it be another commercial building that's right there in between the two, they could hook in to our line that we paid for, and we could recoup some of that capital outlay at some point.
I would say that would be, that would be a possibility. It would be a different cost because of the size of the pipe that's going up the hill from Mr. Townley, but I'm certain something that could be looked into.
We'd have to give him a easement when we'd have to give him a easement when they got to connect to it at the right away. So they'll connect to it fifty-three. If we, if we gave them permission hours, we'd have to get some kind of easement come across.
But if we could recoup some of that capital.
Yeah, that would be a question that we would have to deal with, with Edgewood and Townley as far as the pipe, because I know that the pipe going up the hill is basically a two-inch until it gets to the top, because you only got water pumping up the hill and no sign of the other product.
So they're, they're planning on running an eight-inch under the road?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, they could
They'd tap into that.
Tap into that.
There, but yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it costs us to, we'd have to increase our, increase our pump and everything else, and it'd be
Yeah, the only scary part is our pump failed, it'd fail everybody's system. The only scary part I feel like is in the future, you know, if you've got pumps, pumps tend to fail, and unfortunately, that's an additional cost in the future, but right now, we've got a pretty serious situation where the infiltrator system is located. If we was going infiltrator system, there's a lot of things environmental help is going to require from, from the county as far as how much water usage is there now, and it's a pretty big application needs to be filled out, and I actually talked to her yesterday, and if we go with Edgewood, then we resolve all them issues. So I just think it's better in the long run to go that route.
Is Townley Construction ready to go?
I've talked to Jack. You know, Jack is a pretty busy guy, but he knows the importance of what's going on, and I've encouraged him to move forward, but he hasn't given me a start date at this point, but I hope near future.
Other questions?
Chairman, we got to ratify that tonight.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. You'll remember, you got an email about the emergency situation, and we will be looking at ratifying this later. Any other questions for James? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
County Manager Report, David.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The key indicator report for the month of February, as well as a list of agreements and contracts, is in your packet. Be glad to answer any questions you may have to that. Tuesday's special election saw a thousand fifty-seven ballots that were casted and nearly eighty percent of voters checking yes for Splot, so that has been approved. The Yama Colola Falls State Park Visitor Center project has been officially selected by the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program for Grant Funding in two thousand twenty-one. The grant amount totals nearly two-point-six million dollars, coupled with twenty-five percent matching funds through the North Georgia Mountains Authority and numerous funding commitments from other groups. The target construction start date is late November of two thousand twenty-one. Let's see here. Okay, Dawson County has again been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended December thirty-first of two thousand nineteen. The Certificate of Achievement presented by the Government Finance Officers Association is the highest form of the recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, so congratulations to Vicki and her staff for a job well done. The gravel side of Steel Bridge Road is closed while the bridge approaches are being sledgehammered and repaired, expected to be completed by the end of the week. It should be done, I believe. I don't know if it's done today, but will be completed by tomorrow. Northside Hospital Forsyth will conduct a COVID nineteen vaccination event from nine A M. to three fifty P M. on Tuesday, March twenty-third at Rock Creek Gymnasium. At five P M. Thursday, March the twenty-fifth, emergency services will host a wet down and push-in ceremony of the new ladder truck at Station Two. The community is invited, and there will be light refreshments and giveaways for the kids.
Please say that date again.
Yes, ma'am. It's five P M. Thursday, March the twenty-fifth. Three twenty-five. Okay, at one P M. on Thursday, April the first, Dawson County Senior Services will have a ribbon cutting for the Pauline Stevens Ivy Senior Center. We invite everyone to join us for light refreshments and take a tour of the new facility at Veterans Memorial Park. There was a mention, I think it was the second to last board meeting that we had about golf carts being purchased or recommended to be purchased for the vaccinations at Veterans. We have gotten a transit bus, so that is no need for that at this point. So that has been taken off, and I just wanted to inform the board of that. Commissioner's newly upcoming birthday on March the thirtieth is coming up, so in tradition, we want to welcome him to his birthday by a nice rinnish ceremony and I'll start it off with an operatic voice behind that with "Happy Birthday to you."
"Happy Birthday to you." "Happy Birthday, dear Emery." "Happy Birthday to you."
Hey.
Yeah. Thank y'all.
And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What did you say?
I just, I found out I had to renew my license this year, so it makes it extra special. Thank you, board.
Any questions for David? We're good. County Attorney Report.
County Attorney has no report today.
Any need for a executive session?
There will be an executive session after the regular meeting.
Okay, so we'll take it up then. Okay. All right, with that, we will adjourn the work session. Thank all of y'all for coming. Thanks for y'all who are online with us. We will take a few minutes break, and then we'll get into our voting session. We invite everyone to continue to join us both online and in person, so we'll take a few minute break, and we'll be back. Thank you.